Settle those to Mrs. Shields and Mrs. Brooks. Uh, that Mrs. Karla, please rise from the flag salute.
I point allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for the few minutes of delay. We were finishing up the conversation. With that, we don't have any presentations this evening. So what we're going to do is go right into the public discussion. So let me read then the public announcement. Sorry, let me read the public discussion on page three. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address the issues regarding the operations in the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The Board reminds those individuals to take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of the other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those who were affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. May I have a motion, please, open to the public? So moved. Mrs. Brooks, second. Mrs. Smith. Would anyone from the public like to address the Board? Please come up. We would just need your name and address for the record. You get my thanks. Your pleasure.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Villarreal, 67 Circle Drive. I wanted to just ask a couple of questions and address extended school year. I'm hoping that you may be able to answer some questions for me. Today was first day and I just want to share a little bit from a parent perspective how it went and going into it. Things felt a little chaotic. I think that that could have been drastically improved with better communication going into the program. There were issues that I experienced with transportation. They didn't receive paperwork that I had submitted and there was a lot of confusion around that. In addition, I've had a second issue with paperwork apparently. I submitted a form and I received a notice in my son's back, I would say, that I didn't receive, send in that form. So I, there, it seems like there might be an issue with paperwork going on. So I'm just wondering if perhaps you may be able to address that, maybe not, I'm not sure. I'm just looking to share my experience, I'm sorry, I'm also nervous, I do this very often. Things felt a little bit chaotic at drop off today. I think that not knowing a lot of information going into it probably added to that. And I, I would like to offer some suggestions as well because I don't want to just come up here and complain about an issue I really would like to try to help. So I'm just wondering if perhaps we can provide information to parents ahead of time with key information so they aren't scrambling at the last minute to find it like I was. It would help to know the school's starting and ending times, who the child's teachers are, where those, those teachers, perhaps where their standard school year was or at least the past, where they spent the past school year so we could look them up and see what they looked like to know who we're looking for the first day that we're dropping off. It's just tough to not know who the teacher is and not even know who to ask for help in that moment. And it's the kind of situation where you don't want to pass that anxiety off to your child. So I feel like that may help. And also, if there's an opportunity maybe to organize the teachers a little bit better outside of school when that, that's happening. I know that there is a priority to get children off of the bus and I respect that too. So I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have all the answers, but I believe that may help. And last thing, I just want to publicly thank and commend Diana Accasella. She stepped up and got us answers and kept me as much in the loop as possible when I had those questions. So I did want to acknowledge that to you folks and let you know that she did an outstanding job for us and we love this school district. We just want to maybe have some questions answered and see what we can do to help.
Thank you. Dr. McLaughlin, do you wish to say anything?
No, could I invite you to follow up with me? We'll have to talk to you tomorrow about that.
Should I just have your email?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, may I motion then to close to the public? So moved. Mrs. Shields. Mrs. Brooks. Moving on to communications. Have there been any additional communications since the ease?
No, there hasn't.
Thank you. Moving on to approving the minutes. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Sarris. Mrs. Charak. Board discussion. If not, roll call, please. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherifoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellebord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Superintendent's report, Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm proud to share that the district received correspondence from Robert Quumpus, Assistant Commissioner for the New Jersey Department of Education. The former Austin Rockaway Township has successfully completed the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, otherwise known as CUSAC review, and has been designated as a high performing school district. Placement results were as follows. Instruction program, eighty-two percent. Physical management, ninety-eight percent. Governance, one hundred percent. Operations, ninety-two percent. Personnel, ninety percent. A score of eighty percent is required with weighted indicators. Our district is proud of its performance and its designation as a high performing school district. We believe that is a testament to the efforts and the hard work of our staff where we set the bar high and strive to meet and exceed those goals in all they do on behalf of our students. The district and school grade report for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights was also recently received. At the end of each school year, the New Jersey Department of Education requires all schools to complete an HIB self-assessment. The purpose of this assessment is to grade each school and the school district's efforts in implementing the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act during that school year. Under the Commissioner's program, each school's grade is a raw score of data and the sum of the ratings for all the indicators within each core element on the school self-assessment. For example, seventy out of seventy-eight points. The maximum total score for a school is seventy-eight points. A minimum score of fifty-four is needed in order to meet all necessary requirements. The school district's grade is an average of the total scores of all of our schools within the school district. The Rockaway Township School District grade was seventy-five and our school district's scores ranged from seventy-three to seventy-six. We are pleased that the district's scores were at a high level and we continue to commit ourselves to ever progressing efforts and strategies to ensure that our learning environments are one in which our students feel safe, secure, and accepted. I'm happy this evening to recommend the newest member of our leadership team to the Board of Education this evening. Ms. Anita West is recommended for the position of the Director of Human Resources. This is a newly restored position to our district and will serve as a strong support to our staff as they continue their efforts on behalf of Rockaway Township students. When we do our recommendations, I'm going to ask Ms. West to come forward and just provide some readings to the district. This marks my final report to the Board of Education. I wish to extend my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to serve this outstanding community. I extend my thanks to the Board of Education for their diligence and their unwavering support for the recommendations we have placed forward throughout the school year and for their tremendous commitment, particularly the commitment of time extended to this community of learners. I will continue to follow with real investment in future progress of the school district and know that by the continued work that is done together, great achievements and opportunities await all of Rockaway Township students. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. McLaughlin? If not, Mrs. Administration's report?
Good evening. This evening, I would like to report on the work that will be happening in our buildings over the summer. We are in the beginning stages of design for our exterior sign in Birchwood. We are in the process of having wiring done so that we can install the remaining internal and external cameras here at Copland. IT will be busy this summer updating and upgrading all district desktops to solid state drive and Windows ten to the Pans Performance. The Chromebooks for the incoming sixth grade should be received shortly. New carpet and floor tiles will be installed at Dennisby, O'Brien, Dwyer, and KTM. A bathroom upgrade is planned to DVO and our summer routine of painting, refinishing, and waxing floors and getting everything a deep clean will happen as well. In addition to the above, the business office is busy closing out the purchase orders and payroll for the eighteen, nineteen school year. After the close has been completed, we'll be getting ready for our yearly audit. As it does every summer, every year, the summer will fly by. Hopefully, everyone will get some time for a well-deserved rest and time to spend with family and friends. Have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Karla? If not, courage report, Dr. Lemming.
Thank you. Good evening, Rockaway Township. Earlier today, we concluded our three-day summer institute about catered five balance literacy instruction. Each day, many elementary teachers participated in the training where they worked together to learn about our new reading curriculum and the key components of a balanced literacy classroom. I would also like to acknowledge and appreciate our elementary and preschools for joining the training and working alongside their teachers to support this work. Our success on our balanced literacy journey will be determined by how well we support our leaders and teachers in making shifts in instructional practice and based on the turnout from before our summer institute, I believe we are off to a very good start. Congratulations to our graduating eighth graders and their families. Principal Gennella and his team organized a wonderful graduation ceremony last week, fitting the excellence our graduates demonstrated as students. I wish them all the very best. I could not be more excited for them as they begin their transition to high school and I hope they trust they will always have a home here in Rockaway Township as alumni of our schools. I would like to thank the sixth grade team of teachers here at Copland for inviting me to be part of their end-of-year projects. Over the last several weeks, the teachers worked together to design an interdisciplinary curriculum project where students were permitted to choose their own topic of research and then the students applied skills from each subject area to create robust presentations. I thoroughly enjoyed the student presentations and I salute the teachers for their collaboration on this project. In closing, I'm excited to announce we have identified two math programs to pilot in our fifth grade classrooms during the nineteen and twenty school year. The two programs are Eureka Math and Ready Math. Both are highly rated for their alignment with standards and both place a strong focus on the importance of math discourse being integrated with math instructional. These are the two areas, these are two key areas we prioritized during the review process. KDM and Stony Brook will pilot Eureka Math while Birchwood, Dwyer, and DVO will pilot Ready Math. We will be sure to update the community throughout the nineteen, twenty school year about the effectiveness of each program. As this report marks my final report specific to curriculum and instruction across our district, I would like to acknowledge the depth of talent working in our schools and service to our students and families. This past year, my role afforded me the opportunity to work closely with our principals and our teachers on a variety of matters related to curriculum and instruction. In each collaboration, I always experienced a we can do it mindset coupled with a deep belief in what our students can achieve. It has been a great pleasure and privilege to work with such a talented group of educators and I look forward to strengthening our collaboration in my new role. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member have questions for Dr. Lemming? If not, we'll move on then to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Education, Mrs. Hallworth?
Yes, we met yesterday. We had several items on the agenda, several items we spoke about yesterday and there are two items on our agenda tonight for recommendation with the reading curriculum and the Spanish curriculum. We had discussions regarding the curriculum, the reading curriculum and implementation and we also spoke about what was going on with the teacher training this week. We also discussed the math pilots and how they were different, how they were similar and that the teachers, and both schools were very excited, both groups were very excited by each of those programs. And the last thing we also talked about was Michael Listman, which is going to be included either in the morning meeting or different parts of the day as a reflective piece for students.
So is committee's recommendation then to approve the items on the agenda that are for?
The two, yes, the reading curriculum and for the Spanish curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for the education committee? Thank you. Any other committee?
Actually, I have a question about one. Should I make my report about the delegate assembly right now? Because is that really considered a committee or would that be used on the delegates of the school?
I think it doesn't matter at this point. Go ahead and do it.
The only thing I wanted to bring up is that as the Rockaway Township Board delegate to the New Jersey School Board Delegate Assembly, we just received something on Friday about the minutes of resolutions cutoff date. So if we wanted to submit a resolution to the New Jersey School Board Association, the last date for submission, the Association adopted board resolutions for consideration would be consideration of the Saturday, November twenty-third meeting is Thursday, September nineteenth.
Thank you.
The other one, as the policy chair, I know, I don't think you want to squeeze in another one, Dr. McLaughlin, but I would like to have one set up if we can. Is anyone available over the summer? So right now, we weren't thrilled about July, but?
July third?
Yeah. Okay, we have our board retreat scheduled for the thirteenth, so perhaps that would be a, is anyone available on a Tuesday to either July sixteenth or July thirtieth?
That could be sixteen.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. Okay, so the next policy meeting will be July sixteenth at five p.m.
Any other committee reports? And we'll hear more from the policy committee when we get to the policy section. Great, thank you. Moving on then, recommended for board action. But our A is personnel. It begins on page four. It goes to page eight. There'll be no discussion in public per law. Discussion was held in executive session. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Cherak.
Second.
Mrs. Smith.
I would like to make a motion to table six and seven.
Motion is on the floor to table number six and seven. Is there a second? So moved.
Or second?
Mrs. Brooks. They will be revisited at a later date. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellebord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes, and congratulations. Now the motion passes and Ms. West, you are officially on board. And Dr. McLaughlin?
Yes, Ms. West, could you come on up to the microphone and say a few words and introduce yourself to the community?
Sure. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anita West. I am an educator for almost twenty years at this point. I'm very excited to be coming to Rockaway Township working with HR. I do have some incoming ideas of how to streamline some of our processes as well as work for the rest of the administration team so that everything aligns particularly with evaluations and state submissions. Thank you.
Welcome to the audition. With that, we'll move on to HIB determination, beginning on page eight, ending on page nine. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? Dr. McLaughlin?
Yes, tonight, we're voting on the HIB investigation that was last discussed at our board meeting, number thirty-three, which was unconfirmed. And tonight in executive session, we did review numbers thirty-four, number thirty-five, number thirty-six, and then number thirty-seven, all of which were unconfirmed.
Thank you. May I have a motion then? To, to, let me finish the motion, to affirm number thirty-three as unconfirmed. So moved. Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Cherak. Roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellebord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to education, beginning on page nine, ending on page nine. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Board discussion. Bless your lips.
Um, under, on page nine, number eight, under foundation kits, does this say change in the amount?
Compared to which one?
What we had originally.
It's not a change in the amount. What it does include is these resources for both general education classrooms and specialized classrooms. So that's that combination that gets us to this number.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? I can open to the public if anyone has a question under the education section. If not, roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellebord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on then to D, Special Education, beginning on page ten, really ending on ten but over to eleven for the vote. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? Board discussion. If not, I can open to the public if anyone has a question regarding special education items. Roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellebord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to E, Administration, beginning on page eleven, and I know it goes to, it's quite lengthy, there's a question in there. To page fourteen. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Cherak. Board discussion. Perhaps for the public, Dr. McLaughlin, for the resolution, could you give us any background to where this emanated?
Yes, the RTP, the training occurred this year. Actually, we had two members of our administration attended and what this, this particular training and protocol refers to is the increased ability of school staff to recognize threats before they happen, to see signs for what students might be at risk, particularly in the school environment, and to be able to proactively intervene prior to, to an event taking place. So the individuals who attended that training felt it was very worthwhile. This particular resolution is one in support of state funding for this training to take place. And we were requested by our local legislator to support this bill if we were in favor of it and it was my recommendation to the board that we do get behind proactive efforts such as these which will only help secure our children's safety in school.
Thank you. And for the wiring of the security count by cameras, those are interior cameras, correct, for Copland?
And also exterior.
They're both.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions from board? If not, I can open to the public, that question for this, these items? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellebord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Finance, it begins on page fourteen, it ends on page, I think we hit sixteen? Yes? Motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Board discussion.
Under Finance for travel and the financial bills, I did on the gap of the board's sign off this month to purchase letters.
Thank you. Any other board member? I could open to the public for questions about Finance. Not, roll call, please?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherak?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellebord?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salley?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Policy. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Cherak?
Second.
And Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Mezic as chair?
Okay, on the agenda tonight, we have the following policies for first read. Do need to make a correction, policy zero one five five. Board committees will be tabled to July sixteenth. In addition to that, so will be approved, we will be making up the motion to approve the following policies for first read, policy one six four two, burn sick leave law, policy two five, excuse me, two four one five point oh six, unsafe school two ways option, policy three three four zero, grievance, policy five one one one, eligibility of resident, non-resident students, policy fifty two hundred, attendance, policy fifty six hundred, student discipline code conduct, policy fifty six eleven, removal of students from firearms offenses, policy fifty six twelve, assaults on district board of education members or employees, policy fifty six thirteen, removal of students from assaults with weapons offenses, policy seventy four forty, school district security, policy eighty four sixty one, reporting violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, bullying, alcohol, and other drug offenses, policy eighty five sixty one, pure recruitment procedures for our schools, policy eighty eight sixty, memorials, policy ninety one, aiding school volunteers. The second motion will be to approve the following policies for a second read and then it will become policy, policy thirty three sixty two, sexual harassment, policy thirty four twenty five point one, modified to the early return to work program teaching staff members, policy thirty four thirty one, uncompensated leave, policy forty four twenty five point one, modified to the early return to work program support staff members. Okay, policy one six four two, burn sick leave law. This is a completely new policy, there are new laws that drove this, it's a mandated policy. Any questions? Can you just repeat what you said because I didn't get, oh, sorry. It's a new policy, right, a mandated policy.
Yes.
Based on the new laws that drove this.
Okay, so this is all based on law?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Policy twenty four one five point zero six, unsafe school choice option. The change was in the new recording system, so it's a revised policy. Thirty three, thirty three forty.
So, I requested the policy committee to, uh, review this particular policy so that it would align with our, uh, collective bargaining agreement. Uh, our policy and our collective bargaining agreement did not agree, uh, prior to this, and we did have, um, both our attorney review this, but also the RTEA, uh, review this, uh, these changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, policy fifty-one-eleven, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. This was a... This was a revised policy as well. And it was, um, yeah, additions were in accordance with the provisions of statute, so it's based on statute.
I have a question on that one. The way we received it, you know, there's a lot of bold language in this policy. So, my understanding is, you see something bold, it's new, but if we could look at this policy compared to what we currently have online, it's just the last paragraph that's new to the policy and is bolded, is that correct?
There's a couple citations that changed.
Okay, but we had, like, if you look on page, I guess, um, page eight, nine, where the first aid, the fifth for the eighth grade students, and all of that information is currently in our policy, so it's not new, so we don't need to see it bolded when we receive it, thinking that it's something new. Is that... And then the only other change was in the, um, first section, we currently have eligibility requirements, and that was changed to eligibility to attend school, and that was not bolded. So, just so when the board is looking, when the board is looking at a policy, we're not being given the correct whether it's new or whether it's current.
I'm sorry if, uh, if that was put up there incorrectly.
Also, policy five-fifty-one-eleven, um, when I review them, I actually go to the website and I get them as a tax break, it's covered, so, for me at least, usually when we get all of the sometimes, the buttons we did last Friday, um, and that one is not listed as under consideration for first read. So, I do not have a chance to actually review those.
It's not on the...
It's not on the first read, as a first read.
Really?
So, I would ask if we can redo that, please, 'cause I didn't have a chance to review them.
Sure, then we'll be tabled, and I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, so, uh, policy fifty-one-eleven will go on for, um, July sixteenth.
There's a lot on there yet. I thought I'd lose mine a little bit.
We're enthusiastic, I guess. Um, policy fifty-two-hundred, the attendance. Obviously, there's, um, there's a lot in here, we did, uh...
Could I note some, I'm sorry. Uh, fifty-two-hundred should actually be listed under the second read, because we did have a first read, um, so that's, I apologize for that. Uh, the first read, uh, occurred in an earlier time, we were asked to reconsider it. I asked the board, uh, the, the member of the board would ask for that to be tabled, if they would allow this policy to go through. The, the concern had been stated, that there was a lot of procedure in here, which I acknowledge. However, we do want to make our attendance policy consistent with our handbook and with the procedures, um, and my promise was that, uh, there's certainly nothing wrong with the policy, but that the policy committee in the upcoming school year would parcel out the pieces that should go into a red and can, can, uh, put those in separate documents. Uh, so, I appreciate, uh, Mrs. Sallin, who had the, um, concern, um, indicating that she'd be comfortable with this being on for a second read.
That's correct, but it should be second read.
Okay, so then, uh, please, uh, reflect minutes to say that policy fifty-two-hundred, attendance, is actually on for a second read and not a first.
And on that, when it gets put on the website, we may just ensure every page doesn't say fourteen-thirteen, that it's done accurately.
Every page that's...
Page thirteen or thirteen. There's one I forget along. That was sent to us.
You had a fourteen?
That was what was given to us, that was sent to us.
Okay, uh, policy fifty-six-hundred, student discipline code conduct. Still revised policy. Uh, was a change to the, um, recording system. Any questions on that? Policy fifty-six-eleven, removal of students for firearm offenses, this is a revised policy, um, state rights of providing official definitions. Policy change was, is that, um, as you saw, that the superintendent may modify on a case-by-case basis, the removal of general education certain things in accordance with, which already sent you, six, a cycle sixteen dash five-point-five, B one. And of course, there was a change to the recording system on this one as well. Any questions? Policy fifty-six-twelve, assaults on district board of education members or employees, it's a, um, we get revised, it's changed to the recording system. Uh, policy fifty-six-thirteen, removal of students for assaults with weapons offenses, again, it's revised and is about the recording system. Okay, policy seventy-four-forty, school district security. It is revised. And this is now, my, the revision is now as a mandated policy.
So, the revision was only the word designated added?
Excuse me?
The revision is the word designated.
Correct.
It also says the superintendent of school shall act, word designated, so the prior...
Right.
Right.
And the only comment on that is the spacing issues that showed up in the receipt. Just be correct before it goes online.
So, your copy online, the spacing issue is where?
Required, and then nothing, and it, that's just...
Policy eighty-four-sixty-one, reporting violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, bullying, alcohol, and other drug offenses, revised, um, obviously abuse has been close up and down expenses, um, the recording system is separate on this.
And when we received that, we saw no bold.
We saw no bold in this.
All right, thank you for writing that to my attention.
Are you okay with this going on, or would you like to table it? Okay.
I want to highlight from eighty-four-sixty-one, one of the pieces that was added was that the board event will disseminate a, uh, informational pamphlet that's prepared by the New Jersey Department of Education on how parent limited child's exposure to violence, uh, television, cell phones, computers, and other electronic devices. Uh, that has been, that particular pamphlet has been added to our website under the parents' section.
Uh, policy eighty-four-sixty-one, procurement procedures for schools, revised policy, um, ours showed lines that we had... Policy eighty-eight-sixty, memorials, it's a revised policy. A lot of language was removed because it didn't, um... I remember...
Didn't correspond with the flag code. So, uh, they indicated that although many times municipalities do violate the flag code, that we are supposed to follow it. So, this policy was, um, modified, so that it did fit with the flag code. Uh, it also added that the superintendent may, in his or her discretion, grant an employee of the school district a brief absence without loss of pay for the purpose of attending the funeral of his or her direct supervisor or subordinate, provided that there's no disruption in the educational program.
Last policy for a first read would be policy ninety-one-eighty, school volunteers, it's a revised policy. Um, it has to do with, um, do you want to actually discuss that? It'd be easier to...
Sure, um, so, we did, um, make some modifications. We took the guidelines out of the, uh, of the policy because we did extensively, uh, change the regulation. Uh, our regulation now, uh, includes an affidavit, it includes, uh, guidelines to all volunteers, um, and, uh, it wasn't necessary to have that, those procedural pieces in the policy itself. It also added a definition, uh, to, for the purposes of this policy, uh, defining the term regular basis, uh, that when someone is a volunteer on a regular basis, it's understood to be multiple anticipated days present in school during one given school year. So, a volunteer for the purposes of this policy is not someone who might just come on field day, uh, and that was important to our PTA presidents as well, so that we didn't interfere with recruitment of volunteers for those big events.
And that was that people that come during school hours?
Yes. Yeah, they are going to interact with children on a regular basis. So, you could have a volunteer, for example, let's say you have someone who says, "I want to run a chess club after school," so that would be after school hours, however, they'd be working with children. If they were coming every Monday to run chess club, we would, we would treat them as volunteer under this policy.
I know a lot of the PTA activities are after, they're not during the school day. Now, I know we say PTA offices are, they call it to the volunteer, I mean, there's also class moms, we ask them to this more than...
Yeah, they, they should, I would see class mothers fitting into this policy.
We have that on the regulation.
Yeah.
When will the regulation be available?
Uh, regulation is available, so I can disseminate that.
And you explain how the volunteer training program...
Well, the training is, is, that's one of the reasons why we created the affidavit and the informational page. So, the, the informational packet, uh, provides about three pages of guidelines to volunteers, uh, you know, everything from what restaurants to use in the school, to how to interact with children, uh, and, uh, that would be provided, the affidavit indicates that they've received go, those guidelines, and it also indicates, uh, that we need a signature, uh, from the volunteer to acknowledge it goes.
Any other questions? Okay, so obviously, um, as we discussed in the last meeting, policy thirty-three-sixty-two, sexual harassment, policy thirty-four-twenty-five-point-one, modified duty, early return to work program for teaching staff members, policy thirty-four-thirty-one, uncompensated leave, policy forty-four-twenty-five-point-one, modified duty, early return to work program for staff members, and then as we just discussed, uh, fifty-two-hundred, attendance.
So, if the, uh, vote is to, if the vote is in agreement, then those listed under number two become, become effective as of tomorrow, as of tonight, I guess. Before we come to a vote, I'm not sure if this is the right time, I know you've tabled the committee, the board committee's discussion, and your meeting on the sixteenth to pursue it, but not knowing that you were doing that, I do have a few comments, I don't know if you'd be interested in hearing them, so that it might save you time. Um, and I'm looking at the board committee proposal, and on the third paragraph, it says, "Committee shall consist of no more than three board members, one of whom shall be the president." That's rather strong, and it's almost impossible.
That's one of the reasons that...
So, perhaps maybe would be better. Um, the, uh, I have two other comments, under letter B. An ad hoc committee shall conduct investigations. I don't know that the board can conduct an investigation, I believe the board can look at the results of an investigation, I'm not sure legally it can conduct one, can it?
I, I'm sure there's some scenario where it may be able to, but it can't be...
Yeah, that's not our role, so, uh, I would just ask you to look into that, so that it's worded properly. And the letter D, I think, is illegal. Um, "Ad hoc committee shall announce in advance its meeting date, and any board member may attend this meeting." If you have more than the majority, then you can't have that, it has to be...
Correct, that is one thing that we...
Okay, so that will be changed as well?
Yes.
I believe those were, those were my major concerns, so, thank you.
Yeah, there were a lot of...
Thank you.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the website, I think some of the, um, current concerns or issues generally are formatting, and I think it can be avoided, if we upload everything as a PDF, because when you're trying to look at a Word document, whether on your iPad, or believe it or not, some people may not have Word at all, um, it makes it virtually impossible to open documents. So, I would just request that anything we upload to the website should always be a PDF.
I can open to the public if anyone has any comments about policies. If not, may I have a roll call, please, knowing that the board committees has been tabled, as well as, I know I wrote something else here, as well as the eligibility of resident, non-resident students. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sallin?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to old business, does any board member have old business? Thank you RTEA for the duck race, it was exciting, and the rain held off for, just as it was, they were crossing the finish line, the final ducks were, were, the rain started to come, so it was a lot of fun, you had a great turnout, so thank you for hosting that. Moving on to new business. I have sort of new business, it's not really new business, but I want to publicly thank Dr. McLaughlin, um, as this is your last board meeting, as superintendent of Rockaway Township Public Schools, it's been a heck of a year. Uh, we've had a lot of things happen, and a lot of great accomplishments, um, and it's due to your leadership, in just twelve months, there were some major changes, and we're really headed in the right direction, and on behalf of the board, we all wish you the best of luck in your new position. At the same time, we, uh, prior to the next board meeting, Dr. Tanami will assume the, the superintendentcy position, so we'd like to welcome you, uh, to the next year over, you will now be our superintendent, um, and, uh, we look forward to great things ahead as well, so thank you.
You know how the mic stands.
I'm excited.
Goes with the territory, okay. So, I can now open to the public, should anyone from the public wish to make a comment on anything? If not, the board does need to go back into executive session for board relations, we will not be, uh, making any decisions, and we will adjourn the public at the close of that. May I have a motion to go back into executive session?
Still moved.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mrs. Shields? We hope everybody has a great beginning of summer, thank you so much. Thank you so much.